Is everybody here? Is Mike on the call?
Mike is on.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Weest.
Hi.
Widmer.
Yep.
Lemprous.
President.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Here. Are there any public comments on items not on the?
So I haven't received anything in advance of the meeting. And I don't have any hands raised, but I will just post our graphic here for anybody joining the meeting. For anyone kind of listening into the meeting right now. We do have a few options for you to participate. You can raise your hand using the toolbar at the bottom with the participants icon. If you're dialing in, you can press star nine on your phone and that will show a raised hand and myself or the mayor will make sure that you have an opportunity to make a public comment. And you can also text me, which is the number listed on the screen and for anyone calling in, it's six five zero six eight seven seven zero eight four. That information will also be posted in the group chat and we'll continue to post that throughout the meeting to make sure that people have an opportunity to to participate.
Great. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. In the interest of a continuing brevity meeting, you have the written report before you. We have some key staff on the phone that are prepared to answer any questions the council may have.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on the city manager's report? Hearing none, George, I have one, which is in the monthly services report for the billing, safety and inspections. You know, I think it would be very helpful for us to look at a year-to-date comparison for the last fiscal year. Normally, that's not a big deal, but given the reality of the impact of COVID, and this is our second most significant revenue stream for the town, I think it would be helpful to be able to see how things are playing out this year compared to last year for the comparable period. And if you could just take a look at it, an attachment four is what I'm referring to. I thought it would be possible to create a middle column that would show the fiscal 2018, 19 information that's comparable to what you've presented for the, you know, up-to-date period.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? These are items six through thirteen.
Through the here.
Please.
I think we should discuss item number thirteen to pull it because actually in the staff report, it does say that this item involves council discussion to authorize. And we probably need to have discussion about it.
So are you suggesting that we pull item thirteen?
Based upon what was, I think so, yes.
Well, the resolution says $400 and 200, 200 words, and unless we're going to change that, then I don't see a need to pull it, but I'm happy to.
Item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen are the two police vehicles.
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry.
And Madam Vice Mayor, the items have that general description on them just for the public, just in case an item was pulled from the.
Oh, I see, okay.
To allow the public to understand what you'd be talking about. It's our language addition to the agenda items.
I hadn't noticed that before, but it just seems that, so I do have a question. And I think I raised it to the city manager. It just seems that, could we just maybe wait until the civic center is finished? It just seems like this is a lot of money to be spending on vehicles. Even in reading the the staff report and that, you know, it seems like one is really not very usable. I don't know. It's in the, it's in the vehicle equipment replacement fund, all right, but just on the surface of it, it just seems like we're always every three, four years spending.
Elizabeth, if you want to pull this, I mean, I think we should pull it and talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay. Thanks.
So any other comments on the consent calendar? Okay, can I get a motion to approve items nine through twelve? Is that right?
Seven.
May the record reflect that there's no public comment either.
Yeah, six through, six through thirteen, with the exception, six through twelve, my point.
Also, on that, I'm happy to make that motion. I believe the minutes were amended and I'm not sure everything else was changed in that.
I'll include that in the motion.
Okay, I'm happy to move that.
I'll second.
Okay. Can we go over the floor, please?
Yes, sir. Weest.
Hi, twice.
Widmer.
Yep.
Lemprous.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes. Okay, and so the next item on the agenda is item thirteen.
Okay. So I guess the reason that I was wanting just more discussion about it is it seems to me that even if it's in this vehicle replacement fund, there's, or equipment replacement fund, there's a lot of equipment that's going to be needed in the new town center and I just want to make sure that what we're replacing is absolutely necessary. And the response I received back when I was questioning about it was, well, we'd have to invest maybe $10,000 to make the one vehicle serviceable. Well, that seems like it could, you know, be a good investment if it's going to buy us another year of time. So that's just kind of my thought. On the surface, I think some public members may think that we're just throwing lots of money around.
Well, I can start on that and then I'll let the chief and or Robert chime in as well. As you noted, the funding for the two vehicles is within the equipment replacement fund. That's sort of a depreciation account that the department puts away every year solely for the purchase or replacement of vehicles. AT eighty-three, I think it's AT eighty-three, is non-serviceable. That vehicle needs to be replaced. If we don't replace it, we can't, we'll be down on the vehicle. AT eighty, that's the one that has the computer systems and video monitoring systems that are non-operable. That requires about 13,000 plus to repair. And I don't know if that can be done or not. The chief can opine on that. But there is issues with the vehicle beyond just the electric and video system. The Taurus's are not all that great of vehicles for a number of reasons. So I'll let the chief go further if necessary. Chief, you have to unmute yourself. Let's see, I'll unmute you.
Well. There now?
Yep.
Yeah, so just continuing on the Ford Taurus's, in a lot of different ways, it's just become obsolete to the point where the officers aren't driving them. It's hard to describe without, I know Councilmember Widmer is familiar with these vehicles. The majority of our officers are good size, not meaning that they're fat. But when you get in that vehicle, it's not a comfortable vehicle to drive. There's still like there's safety issues, concerns. It's their office for 12 hours a day. In my opinion, they need to be.
So how many do we have?
That's a good question. The fleet that we have has been the size, from what I understand, talking to Commander Wade for some time, is to accommodate the number of officers that we have, also in emergencies when we have to.
She's asking how many Taurus's we have, chief.
Oh, Taurus's? Right now, we have three. One of them, which is serviceable, is for our K-9 officer. He prefers that vehicle. He is of a smaller stature. It's in good condition. The other two are not.
Okay, question or comment from Bill Widmer?
Yeah, so when I've gone on police ride rounds with the guys and spoken to them about the cars, you know, as the chief pointed out, they are, they have a lot of equipment on and they are reasonable-sized people. And it's difficult, not only their comfort while they're in there, but if they had to get out of the car real quick, they couldn't. And to me, I think that that's, that's, that's an issue. And so you know, they just were, they weren't the right-sized cars for our off, for the majority of our officers and whereas I think the SUVs and the old Crown Vics, you know, were, gave them that space to where they could get out with still having the vests on and all the equipment that they have to carry on their belts. We wouldn't want somebody to get hung up in the car because getting caught on the steering wheel because you can't move the car back and things like that. So so I'm in favor of actually moving forward with, with it because I think it is actually needed.
George, do we know that they don't, won't have that problem in these new vehicles? Have they been in one?
Yes, we have a couple, I believe. Right, chief?
Well, the two that we're getting now, our current fleet is primarily explorers, and the two that we're getting now are Chevrolet Tahos. In the last agency, we moved to the Tahoe platform just because there are larger, significant difference and also with the safety features that they're offering on this year's model over the Ford, it dramatically increases officer safety as well.
Chief? Who's in there? And any further questions or comments?
Carrie.
You're hard to hear.
Apologize.
I couldn't, it's hard to hear you, Carrie.
I'm sorry. I was just going to ask a question for the chief. Can you expand a little bit on the importance and what the electronics mean to a patrol car?
What are you referred to when you say electronics?
Well, I know that, is there a computer system, report writing, something related to all the electronics that tend to have a failure in car number eighty?
Well, yeah, it has in-car computer, in-car camera system. Now, as technology advances, the cars become, you know, more and more expensive and more and more technologically advanced. Just, you know, it's essentially their working office in all capacities.
I think, chief, to go a little further, if those electronics fail, that means there's, there's no video of a suspect's vehicle when you're stopping it. There's no video of the officer, those sorts of things, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
Any other comments?
No, thank you for expanding on this a bit. I just had a resident, you know, comment to me that, you know, gosh, it just seems like a lot of money. And I did read the report and it was very extensive information back, backup. So I, I will support this, this new purchase.
Can I get a motion?
We should take public comment if there is any, Mayor DeGolia.
Great, thank you, Mona. Is there any public comment on this?
I've received nothing. Again, for anybody joining the call, you can make a public comment by sending you can make a comment by sending a text to six five zero six eight seven seven zero eight four. If you're calling in, you can press star nine and raise your hand, or if you're watching the video, you can use the icon at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. It's called participants and there is a hand raise feature. And with that, I have no comments, sir.
Can I make a motion, please?
Please.
Can I make a motion to authorize the purchase of two marked patrol vehicles and declare the two that we're getting rid of as surplus vehicles?
I'll second that.
Okay. We'll.
That's not exactly what's happening, though. Is that right?
Yeah, one's going to become the decoy.
Yeah, they're not being sold a certain, both of them are not, so.
We're taking, we're taking, I apologize, in that one is actually replacing a vehicle and that one would most likely go into surplus and we'd be taking the, one of these vehicles as a decoy vehicle. My apologies.
Okay, anyway.
I still second.
That's good. Roll call.
Weest.
Hi.
Widmer.
Yep.
Lemprous.
Hi.
Vice Mayor.
S.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us on to item fourteen, which is consideration of an appointment to the transportation committee.
Thank you. This is for the incumbent Joseph Davis, who applied for the position just after we'd closed the appointment. So that's why it's coming to you now and it, it didn't come at the last meeting. I think Mr. Davis had planned on joining. I don't know if he's dialed in, so what I'm going to do is just unmute our guests here and see if he's here and would like to speak to his application. As a reminder, this is just a one-year term and he's the only applicant that we have for the transportation committee.
Okay. Is Joe on the call?
So he said he might join. I'm just gonna.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking the phone numbers, so we don't know who they are, if, if one of them is Joe Davis and if he'd like to say anything.
So anybody calling in, you're, you're unmuted and if it's your Joseph Davis, you're more than welcome to speak to your application.
Okay, let's move on. Can I get a motion?
I'd like to move that we reappoint Joe Davis to the one-year term.
I'll second.
Public comment, please, before the motion.
Okay, is there any public comment?
Again, I have none.
Okay.
I still move the same, the same motion.
And I still second it.
Weest.
Hi.
Widmer.
Yes.
Lemprous.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to item fifteen, which has got two parts to it. And the first part, we're going to, we're postponing until our September meeting because there was a miscommunication with Atherton Now. I had thought that a letter went out to them and in June and it actually didn't go out until yesterday. And I heard from Sandy Levison today. And she'll be getting back to us in the next week, but we won't consider that tonight. So the second half concerns a request by me and I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
We'll text when the comeback, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Let the record please reflect that the recusal of Mayor DeGolia is because he has a financial interest in the decision before us and Vice Mayor Lewis will take over as the presiding officer.
Thank you, thank you, Mona. So this item has to do with the, the naming rights that Mayor DeGolia had requested for his donation to the civic center. And at this time, because as I understand it, the environmental dashboard is not going to be what he was expecting it to be because we're not doing the solar panels, which became untenable and we all agreed that we were not going to go full with that. That he would like to choose another naming opportunity. And he's requesting that it would be the medium-sized conference room in the library, which is at a higher level than his donation. But he's also gotten a resident, a very famous resident, and I think you may have seen that Mayor DeGolia was wearing his T-shirt from the ballpark, and the ballpark was dedicated to Willie Mays, to donate to the town artifacts, paintings, pictures of him for memorabilia. And he would put that into the medium-sized conference room and have it a theme conference room for the library. So with Mayor DeGolia's initial $100,000 cash donation and with the additional value, whatever it is, I don't think there's been a value put on it. If it's a dollar, $100,000 or a million dollars, who knows? But it's Willie, Willie Mays and it would be a themed conference room in the library. And he's asking approval from council to do that and make that switch. Personally, I think it's a, well, I'll, I'll open it up for discussion and questions. Any clarifying questions from council about this request?
I actually do have a couple of questions. I'm a little confused about, it's two things. First, what about this other larger conference room? Is that not something he's requesting now? The, if he finds another partner, they can step up to a different conference room or what's the status of that?
I think his preference is what we just described. And I think that the larger conference room, which is always at the $500,000 level in the library, if there was another donor that would like to add to his cash donation of $100,000, then he would be willing to, you know, move up to that. But I think at this point, what's, what he's really requesting here is just as I explained it, which I think is a reasonable.
Gotcha, but, but I'm sorry, Elizabeth, I don't mean to, but does, have you talked to him about this? Is that how you know what he's requesting?
No, I think it's just in the staff report.
Okay, I don't read the staff report that way, but.
Oh, you don't?
No, but does anybody know? The first sentence I'm looking at says a donor would like the opportunity to name the medium conference room, or if an additional funding partner can be found, the large conference room.
Yes, I, I've spoken with the mayor about it and as Elizabeth stated, it is the medium conference room that his preference is at the $200,000 level, even though his contribution level is 100,000. He hasn't been able to identify a co-partner yet for the large conference room. So at this point, it's the medium conference room.
That's just how I read it because I thought that it was kind of, you know, and if somebody else came along with a, a larger donation, of course, I mean, because that's what we've been trying to get, more donations. So.
Gotcha. And then my other question is, I thought, we had always intended to have a Willie Mays conference room, is my understanding. I guess I don't understand how this would work. Would it be named after both of them or how would that, how would the conference room naming opportunity work?
It would be named after Willie Mays.
But I think Mayor DeGolia would have a plaque as the, you know, his charitable donation and, and then the themed Willie Mays conference room would be Willie Mays conference room. That's how I would see it. I mean, I don't think that's been, that was discussed, but I were doing it. I think it's really very reasonable and creative because we haven't gotten any other legends. And at one point, we were talking about, you know, in the strategy sessions early on with Atherton Now, really reaching out and having legends of Atherton step up and, you know, claim one of these or multiple rooms to make it interesting. And whether or not they would do it on a rotation basis or just, you know, in perpetuity. And I feel that this is something that would be in perpetuity because it's not like I, as I understand it, Willie Mays is talking to city manager really about it is that he's not lending it, he's donating it to the town.
Yes, I guess my question still is, is, I thought the plan was to have a Legends room, would have Legends or a Willie Mays conference room specifically. I didn't realize that we were going to also have donors for those rooms. So this is first time hearing of that. Has that always been the plan?
This, this room isn't intended to be or replace the Legends of Atherton's theme. This is an individual donor listening Willie Mays for participation in a themed room with memorabilia named after Willie Mays.
Yeah, so my question, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be too pointed on this, but I don't understand whether, we have the opportunity to either have this room stand by itself or have it also be a room that's named after or that has a plaque on it that, that Rick's got his, his name on, right? Am I correct about that? Willie Mays is going to make the donation either way, presumably.
Yes, my, my understanding is Willie Mays room, but as the vice mayor is articulating, there, there could well be a plaque sponsored by Rick DeGolia or something like that. I don't believe that that's what he's actually asking for, though.
So I guess I'm confused also, if I can, for a couple of reasons. I'm confused that we're kind of arguing about this, but also that did Willie Mays approach the town and say, I want to donate this stuff, or did Rick approach Willie Mays? I don't know.
The latter.
The latter. So Mayor DeGolia in, I'm only surmising, I don't know. I can just kind of try to connect some of these dots. He donated $100,000, okay, which is you know, a, a significant donation to a lot of people. And the dashboard was not something that he had always told me early, early, early on that he had donated to Atherton Now with the covenant that it would only be perfected if there was some energy efficiencies in the, in the project. As you know, that's been his purpose all along. And as we all said, we would not pay for solar power, but if somebody would donate for solar power, we would be happy to accept it. Or if we could do a PPA, we would accept it. And when that didn't work out, we said, you know, we're not going to pay for it, so it doesn't get put on. So that being said, I think, you know, Rick was looking around, you know, what would be the right thing to do? Other donors had chosen some of the other things that I think he had his eye on, but this was something he kind of created, you know, the medium-sized conference room. His donation was 50% of the stated value of it. And instead of coming back and saying, gosh, you know, I'm just, I'm, I don't know, I don't know his thinking, but this is how I'm reading into it. Instead of negotiating and say, I just want this for half price, he created more value to it by going to Willie Mays and saying, will you donate some artwork and be part of this project here? So in my, anyway, that's, that's how I understand it. And I really find it I don't know, disturbing that we're.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, to disturb you. Just generally in the corporate world, there's a concept known as usurping a corporate opportunity, which is if the town's going to do something anyway, or the corporation can do something anyway, and then individual leverages that, that actually raises questions.
I see.
So that's, that's, I think, I think the town's intent was always to do this. So that's why, and I'm not even arguing, I'm asking questions about what, I still don't understand what the intent is here, whether it'd be a conference room that's named after both of them or has a plaque or doesn't have a plaque. I don't think I know from everything I've heard.
But, but you think that that's kind of what Rick did?
I, I think that it was clear we were intending to have a Willie Mays conference room, from everything I've heard, yes.
Yeah, I believe that, I'm with Mike. I always thought we were going to have a Legends conference room and it was going to be probably the large one and and I guess Willie's stuff would, would have been in the larger one.
I don't know. I, I don't know who was organizing that. And I think we had talked about, you know, getting donors to put together the Legends together and no one's done that. And I don't know about the usurping a political or business opportunity. Mike, I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's why I raised questions, though, because if it was something the town was going to do anyway, and then if it's, if an insider, in effect, comes in and exploits it in the context of, of other settings, you would raise questions. You'd say, is this, is this the right thing?
But do you think that that's really what happened?
We're still in the questions period, so I'm still asking questions. And I don't think I've gotten an answer to that yet.
I don't think I have an answer to that.
Yeah, and, but I think George said that we, the town was intended, or Willie Mays' contribution is not dependent on, you know, Rick's donation in any way.
I didn't, I don't think I heard the city manager say that.
I, I didn't. I know that Rick reached out to Willie Mays to solicit his participation, but I don't know that Willie's conditioned his on, the mayor. But I don't know that Willie's conditioned his on the mayor's participation, or Rick's participation, rather, or as a Legend of Atherton.
Were there any other questions from any other council members on this? Not to cut you off, Mike, but I just.
Yeah, I do myself, through the mayor, vice mayor. I'm looking at the list. Is there a reason why that, you know, there wasn't a consideration for any of the items in the $100,000 category? I don't know. Was staff, George, was any of these other discussions? I, it just seems, I'm just.
I think the, if the intent by the donor was to have memorabilia from Willie Mays, the only real areas would be a small conference room at the $100,000 level. And those may have been perceived as too small. I don't know. I don't know what was in the donor's thought process.
Yeah, I just, I apologize because I'm kind of feeling like we jumped into a Willie Mays conference room discussion along with Mayor DeGolia's potential donation, when that has kind of a different life of itself. With the mayor's, you know, generous contribution. I'm just looking at the list here, and I think I see at least if, if if I'm reading this correctly, three small library rooms, a heritage room, and potentially a Redwood Grove.
The heritage room's already been named.
The Redwood Grove, I just, I just want to say, the Redwood Grove is not native species. And so it's kind of not something I think that.
So do we need to call it non-native Grove behind the library? I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out what, I'm looking at the list, what was provided. And if there was any considerations for the things that were within the donation category? Because this is one of the problems that we're having a discussion with other donors related to where their contribution is and what they can get. I'm just trying to figure out.
Councilmember Weiss, can I ask you what you, what other donors are having problems with?
I didn't say problems, but we're trying to solve what their donation is.
Oh, you mean.
What the letter engagement that we're not talking about.
Right, right, right. Well, I think that, that in and of itself is really a separate matter. But I think we all came up with a good idea and we all blessed it. And we, you know, presented it now to the, the three donors to, as a, as a.
So we're trying to solve the same problem we're trying to solve with.
You know, I think, I guess if you were, you know, kind of put yourself in somebody else's shoes for a minute, I think that we want to try to do something that's significant or, you know, meaningful, meaningful to you, meaningful to the town. I don't think that you can combine that we were always going to have a Willie Mays conference room anyway, no matter what. And that it's not adding any value to this, to Rick's donation to warrant the medium sized conference room. Can, do we have any conversation here? Can I open it up for public comments?
Yeah, I just have some comments, that's all.
Why don't we open up for public comments?
I have no public comments, Vice Mayor Lewis. So I'll take this opportunity again to let anybody joining the call that if you'd like to make a public comment and you're calling in, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Use the chat feature if you're logged in on the video to send a message to myself. Or text at 650-687-7084. You can also use the icon at the bottom of your screen by clicking participants and raising your hand. And again, I have no public comments.
Thank you, Anthony. I'll bring it back to council. So councilmember Widmer, what is your comments?
Um, first off, I'm very appreciative to, for the donation that Rick has made. And I'm appreciative of the fact that Willie is willing to donate or donate things to the town. I think some other, other potential legends, you know, should be approached. And we should move forward with the legends thing, but I realize that's not the discussion here. So to stay on point, we've had three million dollar donors. And they asked for some things that were outside the million dollar range. And, you know, the mayor was very vocal about, we're not going to discount if they want something more, they can pay up for. And there was an exception made for the Lurries, who had worked with Rick. And now Rick is coming and asking essentially for a 50% discount. In the meantime, the people that really made a big impact on the fundraising with these million dollar donations and did not revoke them, even though some of their comments that, you know, they indicated that we want certain things in the design or things taken out we didn't do, we chose not to do as a council. They didn't revoke those commitments. And so, you know, if we're not going to, you know, impact or do something for them or other donors by giving a 50% discount, then I, I don't think we should be doing it for the mayor. It just doesn't look right. It doesn't feel right. And so, so that's my comment. I am in favor of maybe setting something aside, and maybe that's what we need to do. In another meeting, set aside one of the conference rooms and call it the Legends Room and take it off the list. But I just don't see that we should be doing a 50% discount for somebody who's an insider.
Any other comments? I would like, I would like to kind of rebut you just one second, if I may. And maybe it's not the right thing to do, but councilmember Widmer, I don't think it's asking for a 50% reduction. I think the request is the $100,000 plus additional value being added, which is unknown at this time, the value of the memorabilia. It could be well over 100,000, which would then make the, the naming opportunity for the medium sized conference room equal to what has been listed or more than what it's been listed at. So I do take pause with your comment that he's asking for a 50% reduction because he did add value to it. So I'll go on to other members. Any other members have a comment at this time?
If I might, through the vice mayor.
Carrie? Yes, councilmember Weiss? Yes.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, you know, personally, you know, the issue with Willie Mays and a discussion related to that room and what memorabilia, I think that that's going to be a little bit of a process. But I also think that that's kind of a standalone. You know, I know that we're trying to get to a resolve with Rick's donation. But, you know, I kind of personally would like to have that separation between the discussions with Willie Mays and the contributors and, you know, whatever generosity Willie has and the town moves forward with whatever way we identify and recognize. Mr. Mays would be, to me, in a separate issue than lumping it together with the mayor. But I also have some reservation in the perception of fair treatment across the board. You know, being discounted rates or whatever that is in how we treat individuals. We're recognizing already and trying to come to some resolve. And, you know, and making a decision or haven't made a decision related to something there. And then moving forward with a decision that may have the perception of why are we not treating everybody fairly, but yet, you know, something that somebody might perceive as, you know, one of us or a town member, anybody that would be a staff member or even elected official, a perception that we would give favoritism to Rick. Yeah, I would just caution that.
Um, councilmember Lempers?
Yeah, that's actually what I'm struggling with, Timmy. What, one thing we could do is just say, we're actually going to have the price of all these donations amounts. I think if we don't do that, then we are running, we are, not just running the risk. I think we are giving an insider a deal that's not available to everybody. And that kind of rubs me the wrong way.
Okay.
But, but we have done, we have actually discounted some of these before. So that's why I'm struggling. I'm not, I just, we, if we're open to it, we should just say that, you know, we are willing to discount these prices substantially. And if not, then we probably shouldn't do that for Rick, because if we're not going to do it for everybody. I think we, this group of us, we should be the last ones we do that for, not the first ones we do it for.
So if I may just kind of bring us back to remembering about the Lurries. This was new money coming in as a donation that had not been done through the Atherton Now fundraising before. And they negotiated a lower price for that. It's nobody else had said, well, I want that. And there had been no donor coming up and, and making that donation for that amount. So as far as the three founders, I do believe that the million dollars per founder, we have come up with a solution, which I believe, when really looked at, will satisfy each of them in an area where they, you know, were not aware of. I think the civic court, the way it's been scheduled out for a million dollars for Mr. Speaker, I think that is what he envisioned the civic court to be. What we did was create two other courts, the new council chambers courtyard and the historic courtyard for each a million dollars. So I think that for the combined $3 million, they're getting the courtyard, which is what they wanted all along. So I think that's, that's something that is reasonable to expect. Again, these prices that were put on these rooms and native species gardens, they were estimates in fundraising time of pretty saying, these are aspirational. Yes. And when you get up into the higher numbers, I mean, half a million dollars is a really big number for a conference room. But anyway, we, I, I just think we should be really grateful for all of the donors so far. And it's, it's hard to argue about donors and names. Especially when you feel that somebody's trying to take advantage of the situation, I guess. So I guess I don't see it that way. And I think that he's added value. I don't know if Willie Mays is willing to add more memorabilia and go into the large conference room. Let me make it, or we combine other legends to fill out the large conference room, right? And so it's just not all Willie Mays, but it's, I don't know, Joe Montana or Jerry Rice. So I guess we need to vote on this, right?
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just provide some additional comments from my perspective. We've been trying to fundraise for this project for a while with Atherton Now and others. And I find it hard to, to fathom that over the next year, we're going to get, you know, a $5 million road donation and a $3 million historic town hall renovation. So at some point, the council's going to have a conversation around, you know, a lower level donor who's already donated money, not new money to the project, who wants a naming opportunity that's still on this list at a half million dollars or more. And they've contributed $100,000 or $200,000. You probably have those conversations at some point. There's, as you mentioned, there's only one donation on this list here that was new money. And, and that was the Lurries. And then in addition, your additional 50,000 from the Orchard Foundation. The Legends Room, that's not even on the list of the naming opportunities. That was a concept and an idea for something in the library. And I think the large conference room in the library is probably the only one that really lends itself to being the Legends of Atherton Room. And that, that doesn't mean that a Willie Mays room can't be separate. It just means that Willie could be in both rooms, along with all the other Legends of Atherton. The small conference rooms are really small round tables with, you know, maybe a bookshelf and some window space. They're not really big rooms. So if you're going to do a separate room for a legend like that individually, it would either need to be a medium conference room or somewhere else in the library. The Redwood Grove and the small conference rooms are the only remaining $100,000 donor level naming opportunities, unless there's other modifications that the council wants to make. The Redwood Grove and at least one of the conference rooms was under consideration by Bonnie Utangzu. We haven't heard back yet, so one of those may be taken. So that's, that's my additional comments for whatever they're maybe worth.
Thank you, city manager. May I ask, just a second?
Can I?
Yes, Carrie, councilmember.
I was just trying to interject a little bit, you know. I thank staff for explaining a few other things. But I think that, you know, in my perception, this has to pass the smell test beyond the smell test. And it's not meant to be anything negative against the mayor. And I'm not saying that there's any, there shouldn't be any perception thereof. But I think that the discussion really, we need to solve some of these, the big, if we're going to, as a group with the mayor included, to agree that we're going to do a reduction consideration in the overall list of figures. And we have that recently discussed with all the donors. And which, you know, can open up some other variables, you know, after George's discussion of what really is valued here. And that we respond, we shouldn't, and it's not, again, meant to be derogatory to Rick in any way. But it's just the perception of, we can solve these issues and say, to all the parties that are currently hanging, we're, we actually are going to consider it. I don't know what the discussion is or the result of any discussion, or even the letter that went out to Atherton Now. I don't know that, and I apologize through the vice mayor. I don't know what the end result of that will be. It may be that they are very agreeable, or it may be that they're not, I just don't know that here today. So myself personally, I would feel more comfortable if we had a better resolve with the mayor included in the discussion related to this before we made a decision on any, any item lower than the rate that is indicated on this list, that we agree as a group that we're going to have this discussion, that the values here are just out of line and that we're going to be fair across the board. Now, we do know that the individuals that are hanging in, in conversation right now are not considering what the mayor's discussing. So it's not as if he would be taking something to that effect. But as a group, if we can have that discussion and then a reconsideration with a, let's call it a more realistic of what the values of what we have here, then this discussion completely changes, right? Because we're not treating him differently before we haven't made a decision on several other donors, in my opinion. Because as a group, we would have considered it.
Okay, thank you, councilmember.
Thank you, and I apologize for sticking my nose in after George.
That's fine. Any other final remarks? I wanted to ask a city attorney, are there legal standings similar to what councilmember Lempers brought up that we should be aware of? I mean, I could be very naive about the whole thing and my perception, yeah.
Yes, Vice Mayor Lewis, the, all public officials, including the mayor and the council members, are governed by rules of ethic and transparency as codified in common law, but also in the Political Reform Act and Government Code, Section 1090. So normally, absent an exemption that's available by statute, a council member would not be able to participate. And in some instances, the entire council would be prohibited from making a decision where there is a financial conflict of interest that relates to a council member. In this case, there is an exemption available to the mayor and any other council member because one of the structure of the donation, one being made to Atherton Now, which is an independent nonprofit organization who then conveys that, those funds to the town for purposes of reimbursing costs for the civic. to the town for purposes of reimbursing costs for the civic center project. But also, the donation and the naming policy is generally applicable to all members of the community. And because it is a program that's available to everyone on the same terms, as long as, again, it is made available on those same exact terms and council members are not treated any differently from one another, then the balance of the council may continue to make a decision on this without Mayor DeGolia's participation. So I would say that the same rules do apply. We must be cognizant of not providing any kind of special treatment for he or any other public official here. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. I just have one quick follow-up about it. So if, is there any difference in the fact that he's not asking for a, a reduced price necessarily of, he's saying, he's not coming and saying, he wants the medium-sized conference room, which is priced at two hundred thousand for his one hundred thousand dollar donation. He's not asking us for that. In fact, he has enhanced the hundred thousand dollar donation with a value of additional artifacts that are being donated to the town. I mean, if those artifacts were appraised and given a monetary amount, would that make a difference or not?
I think in normal circumstances, yes. However, what I've been hearing from other council members in this instance is that the town had previously considered reaching out to Mr. Mays and having him donate. And because of that, because of those facts, there is a complication in simply determining that Mr. DeGolia's contribution should be seen exclusively as the hundred thousand dollar donation plus the appraised value of the memorabilia provided by Mr. Mays. I think that the balance of the council is struggling with the fact, and it's a very reasonable concern that had the council and the town already determined that they would be reaching out, that that was a benefit that would have previously been conferred to the town, whether or not Mr. DeGolia had independently reached out to Mr. Mays. And therefore, the value of that memorabilia should not be included in Mr. DeGolia's contribution.
So I guess my final question is, has the council, have we codified and actually set forth the, the actions, giving the city manager or staff or whoever it is the authority to go and reach out to Mr. Mays in this regard? Did we sign a resolution? Did we pass a resolution or direction to staff to do that specifically?
I'm gonna have to defer that to the manager because that may have occurred prior to my tenure. During my tenure, that has not occurred, and I don't recall a discussion about this.
Can I say that would not be the standard? It wouldn't be whether we filed a, passed a resolution and directed it. I think if we were talking about it and we're heading in that direction, and then someone who was in the room got ahead of it by reaching out, I think that raises issues.
I see. Okay.
And, and I do concur that formal action was not necessary, but there should have been some sort of discussion to memorialize the town's intent to have done that.
Yeah. I, I think so much has, was talked about in generalities, especially from the Atherton Now strategy and sessions and things.
The only council-approved item was the donation brochure that included photos of the library and the lead-in for the library conference rooms at all three levels reads, "There are several small, medium, and large conference rooms located within the heart of the library. Each donor has the opportunity to name a room for family or dedicate the room to an Atherton legend of your choice and decorating with memorabilia. Atherton Council to approve legend or memorabilia decor."
Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right. Any follow-up from anyone else this time? So what we have to do, we have a vote on this to, it's a formal action to either approve the request or deny.
Or to follow Councilmember Weest's option, postpone it until the council can have a separate conversation around a Legends Room.
Okay. Well, why don't we take that up first? Okay. So could I get a motion from someone, maybe Councilmember Weest would like to make the motion to postpone the decision and to, and bring the whole naming valuation opportunities back to council for review and potentially restructuring. Councilmember Weest?
I, I'm sorry. My kind of finger crossed. I, I, it seems I'm getting cut off. I'm not doing it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I was gonna say this, I, I appreciate your language, and that would be exactly what I would have said.
Okay. Thanks. So that's a motion. Do I have a second of that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lempers. Any discussion? All in favor? We have a roll call vote?
Sure. Weest?
Aye.
Widmer? You're on mute, sir.
I said no.
Lempers?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor?
Aye. So that's motion Carrie, so we don't, we don't have to do the other motions. And we'll direct City Manager to bring this item back to us, I guess, in September.
Actually, what we bring him back is the conversation around possible reductions in donation levels and that sort of thing. Before I bring the donation for the Legends Room or the Willie Mays item back.
Okay. Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's let the mayor know that he can finish up the meeting. Item number sixteen. So George?
I texted him, so hopefully he'll return momentarily.
Okay. Should I go ahead and start that?
Certainly can.
Well, item number sixteen, I believe, is the next item. And it is authorization for the Refuge Services Subcommittee to negotiate on behalf of the town for exit from the South Bayside Waste Management Authority. City Manager, do you want to take this?
Sure. As, as the council's aware, the town released a request for bid for Refuge and Recycling Services back in 2019. After a review of the responses, the council directed that the Subcommittee proceed with active negotiations with Green Race Recovery, that's kind of hard.
Very hard.
For a potential Refuge Services franchise to begin in January 2021. The current franchise agreement with Recology terminates on December 31st of 2020. The town hired our three group, our three consulting group to assist the Subcommittee with negotiations. Subcommittee consisted of Councilmembers Weest, Councilmember Widmer, and myself. And the council's been regularly apprised to the status of those negotiations. The council then directed that correspondence be sent to the SBWMA as required to facilitate the town's withdrawal effective December 31st, 2020. An initial letter was sent to the SBWMA back in March. They responded to that, noting that they'd done a bond liquidation defeasance analysis and estimated that the town's exit would be to approximately two million dollars plus some additional obligations and liabilities related to the JPA itself. We, of course, disagreed with that, conducted our own analysis. And the results of that analysis overlaid with numerous opportunities for mitigation of those costs, presented a more reasonable exit cost of around nine hundred and three thousand. And in fact, there had been independent conversation with the SBWMA representatives that that is a more appropriate number for the town's exit. Negotiations with Green Waste Recovery have progressed to the point that a franchise agreement with them would provide residents with a long-term financial benefit and regulatory compliance assurance under SB 1383 and others. The final details of negotiated franchise agreement remain in progress. The Subcommittee's still working on it. Staff anticipates returning to the council at a special meeting on July 27th with a final recommendation and term sheet for award. However, to facilitate our exit negotiations with the SBWMA, we need to proceed forward with negotiations with them on what that exit number is. We sent a letter back to them at the end of June as required with that number in it, nine hundred and three thousand. We heard back from them that they would review that and get it back to us as soon as possible. We haven't heard back yet. But staff's recommendation this evening is that the council authorized the Refuge Services Subcommittee to negotiate on behalf of the town for a final exit from the SBWMA, as stated in the June 29th letter attached to the staff report. The town believes that a reasonable exit cost is approximately that nine hundred thousand dollar number, but it's anticipated, of course, that the SBWMA disagrees with that. And that concludes this staff report.
We'll let the mayor take over.
Any questions or clarification?
I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just, George, could you run through the timeline? I'm a little confused about the timeline of the various steps that happened over the next few months, if this moved forward.
So we issued a notice of, a notice of withdrawal, and that's effective December 31st of 2020 from the SBWMA. The franchise agreement that we currently have with Recology also terminates by its own terms on December 31st of 2020. So we, the SBWMA requires a six-month notice. So once that notice is provided, the SBWMA provides us with a cost to exit. We reviewed that cost. We negotiate that exit cost. That has to go back to the SBWMA board for a four-fifths board approval to withdraw by, you know, four-fifths vote by the member agencies of the SBWMA. And then in the intervening time, we continue and finalize our negotiations with Green Waste Recovery or the proposed franchisee, franchisee, I think. And then authorize the award of that franchise, but that would not begin until January 1, 2021. However, they do need some ramp-up time in order to prepare for that. So an award of franchise would allow for that.
And does the board vote need to happen? What happens if they don't get a four-fifths vote?
That's my question.
If we don't get a four-fifths vote, or we can't come to a successful negotiation, there would be a provision within the franchise agreement with a proposed franchisee that would allow that to terminate, that not be finalized, so to speak. I think Mona can articulate better than I can on that issue. But it, and then we would ask for reasonable rescension of our withdrawal. And we'd stay with the SBWMA and execute the agreement with Recology. Mona, did you have anything further to add on that?
I agree with that. That's correct.
So I have a question.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay. So the, the numbers are pretty far apart. It's like a fifty percent discount that we're expecting from what they are saying, actually more than fifty percent. And I assume that from your June 29th letter, that we would be happy with the nine hundred and three thousand dollar payment penalty to withdraw. What happens if it's two million or two point five million? And at, or at what point do we say, oh, this is just too much. We're not gonna go forward? Do we have a cutoff number? I think Councilmember Widmer might have an answer to that.
Sure. All of them jump in as well. But just for clarification, it's not a penalty for withdrawal. It's an actual cost that the town owes.
Right. Okay.
Ours on the bond and, and other costs.
Okay.
Councilmember Widmer and Councilmember Weest can certainly add to that.
Okay.
No, I think that's a reasonable response, George. It's an unknown cost, but it, you know, we've calculated through the consultant and what our estimate is. And that's kind of what our offer is back to them. And they haven't been very definitive about it.
Well, I, I could add, first off, I, I'm, I'm not sure we should be chatting about numbers because we're essentially negotiating in, in public, setting a number and a target for them to be as their bottom-level number. But, but I will just, but I will just go finish by saying, you should recall that the, the bonds that they're asking for repayment on were two parts. One was a replenishment and a refinancing of the current bonds that built the initial facility of which we are using today. The other money, for the most part, is sitting in a bank drawing interest and is going to be used for development of new technology and new capabilities that will help get the other communities that have a high degree of multifamily dwellings, as well as a lot of commercial, to get them compliant. Today, if you look at the average of their tonnage, as you remember, our tonnage and our diversion rate used to be eighty-four percent. It's now down to seventy-eight percent for reasons I don't understand. But, but the average for the commercial and the multifamily for all the other parts of the jurisdictions is about twenty-eight percent. So when they have to put in new capabilities to drive that up and get that up to a higher number that will meet the state's requirement, and then therefore beyond that, that will have to be paid for. And that will be not only the cost, the extra twenty million dollars that's sitting there in the bank, seventeen million currently. They've spent three of it, but additional funds as well. And so that's where the difference is, is, you know, we think that the number that, that George has mentioned in the staff report is a fair number that amortizes the cost that we were a part of and that we benefited from. We're not benefiting from anything that's, that even hasn't been done yet. And that's why we feel that a number lower, substantially lower than what they had, is more appropriate. And in fact, the, the analysis that George has done actually took it a few steps further and got, and has the number down, and justifiably so, down to even half of the number that, close to half of the number that we had there. So, so that's, that's where the information is. And that's really, you know, what the situation is. And that's why one of the things that, why we believe that we have outgrown, or the JPA has outgrown us. So we are a stable residential, finite residential waste generating community with a substantial amount of organics. And our neighbors all around, the other eleven members of the jurisdiction are all, you know, highly established with, with commercial and multifamily dwellings, which are deemed commercial, and that the, the agency has refused to establish a commercial rate. They only have one rate. And so the residents will pay, not only our residents, but all around. But, but they have supplemented, the other jurisdictions can pass the cost on, maybe inappropriately so. I don't know if they're doing that, but they can, they can burden the commercial rates with the higher rates and keep their, their residents, you know, clean on that. We can't. And so that's why, you know, we, as, as a group, including Robert, actually, have, have feel that it's in our best interest to move, not just because of the costs that are there today, but also due to the costs that are, that are to come. And also I'll remind you that Recology waited to the last minute to negotiate our portion of the, of the revised and renewed franchise agreement. And you may recall the comments both from myself and Jen, as well as Bill Connors, is that they refuse to negotiate on anything.
Okay, but we're, we're past questions of clarification. Let me see if there's any public comment. Anthony, do you have any public comment on this matter?
I don't at this point, but I do believe we have at least one member of the public that may want to make public comment. I'm gonna ask them to unmute themselves now. I don't at this point, but I do believe we have at least one member of the public that may want to make public comment. I'm going to ask them to unmute themselves now. And is this Mr. Alan Epstein?
It is, Mr. Suber. I don't wish to make a comment at this time, but thank you for the opportunity.
Okay.
Okay, so seeing no public comment, we can go on with the conversation. Does anybody? Elizabeth?
I just want to ask, Councilmember Widmer, you mentioned even Robert is in agreement to this. I'm assuming you're talking about our Public Works Director, Robert Ovadia? Or our finance guy? I wasn't sure, but.
Our finance director who, who gets all the financial reports as well, and, you know, was sitting in on all of the calls.
Okay, well, maybe he can, you know, opine his perspective on this and give us his.
Well, okay, just to be clear, my understanding of the item before us is specific to authorizing the subcommittee to negotiate on behalf of the town to exit SBWMA, which we haven't explicitly authorized previously.
That's correct.
Here, Mayor DeGolia, if I can just summarize again for the benefit of the council and the public, because the town is a member of the SBWMA JPA, we have to follow the protocol set out in the JPA agreement if we wish to, to withdraw. Withdrawal is articulated in section fifteen point one of that joint powers authority agreement, and it essentially requires three steps to be followed for withdrawal to be effectuated. Number one, we have to provide the JPA with at least six months advanced notice of the date by which we want to withdraw. The council has previously authorized this act, and the town manager has sent this letter to the executive director of the JPA explaining that the last day for our participation into the JPA will be December thirty first of this year. So that's one out of three. The second aspect is to negotiate with and determine the cost of withdrawal. The cost of withdrawal equals the liquidation of the town's proportion of any and all existing debts, obligations, and liabilities. Right now, that's kind of where we are. And the council requested action is to authorize our subcommittee to work in consultation with staff as well as the JPA executive director and authorized representatives to reach agreement to that amount. Once that amount is achieved, then we'll move into the third and final step, which is to seek a four-fifths approval of the board at the JPA. Those three acts all completed will mean that the town has withdrawn from the JPA and can move forward with its own with green waste essentially, if it, if we enter into an agreement with them.
Thank you. Other comments from the council, Carrie?
No, 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 I, I was just, I was going to make a motion, but I would like to hear the rest.
I have a, I do have a question. I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And it dovetails onto one that Councilmember Lemprous asked, that George, you know, about a timeline and talking about the four fifths vote approval of members of the JPA. It's my understanding that the four fifths is just not of the board members on the JPA. Those board members represent cities and other councils. They have to get approval from their council in order to vote one way or another in, in a matter like this. So time, timing wise, I am at a little loss as how that is going to be executed and, because it will take quite a while for agendizing in all these eleven other jurisdictions. Or maybe I have that wrong. I don't know.
Yes, Vice Mayor Lewis, I actually wholeheartedly disagree with that interpretation. I know that, that interpretation has been forwarded by the JPA.
Yep.
But it, but that reading necessarily requires words to be inserted into the language of the JPA agreement, which does not exist. That goes against the canons of contract interpretation, and that's simply not what is required. Reading exactly the language of the agreement under fifteen point one subsection C, and I quote, "The approval of such withdrawal by a four-fifths affirmative vote of equity members," and quote. It does not say in addition that equity members shall separately obtain approval and then come back to the board. It simply says four fifths of the equity members' vote. So that is a completely superfluous step, and I don't think that it's necessary or required. Even assuming arguing it was required, however, and the separate member agencies would be able to hold special meetings, which only require a twenty-four hours notice requirement to obtain that approval and get back to the board.
I appreciate that.
Mona, if I can just clarify, I, that, your interpretation is that the, that each board member would vote independently and wouldn't require its city council to direct it. But it's possible that the board members wouldn't be comfortable to make the vote without being directed by their city councils, in which case that's kind of that board member's decision. I, I faced that issue at PCE. I'm sure all of us have faced it with our regional boards. And some people are comfortable and some people aren't. It's kind of an individual board member's decision, but yeah, I saw the, the, the management of the SBWMA interpreted that it would require the councils to get, or I guess board of supervisors to give direction to whoever the board member is, but it seems to me, isn't that an issue that's going to be up to each individual board member?
I do. I think that whenever a council authorizes a representative to serve as its member on, for example, the JPA, they are also authorizing that person to make decisions on, on the town's behalf or the city's behalf. And in the event that a member representative does not feel comfortable, it doesn't mean that they don't have authority. So I don't want to equate comfort with authority because they're not the same. Secondly, as I previously mentioned, from a timing perspective, especially in, in this day and age where we can easily have virtual meetings with twenty-four hour notice, and because we have complied with the timing requirements set forth in the JPA agreement, it would be unreasonable for the JPA not to be able to render a decision in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Mona, for that discussion.
To the mayor, to the mayor, that this is, that's the responsibility of the executive director of the SBWMA to, to effect a vote. It's, it's not our responsibility to make sure everybody's comfortable and all the other organizations have their time to do it. They have six months to get all this stuff in place.
Right.
That's why we give them six months notice. We don't need to solve their problems. We only need to solve ours.
Okay, are there any other comments? And is there a motion? I've already done a couple.
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Go ahead. No, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the subcommittee to negotiate the detachment number, amount, so.
Do I have a second?
All seconds.
Okay, can we do a roll call, Anthony?
Yes, sir. Councilmember West?
Aye.
Widmer?
Yes.
Lemprous?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, we're now moving on to item seventeen, which is the Knox Play School rent waiver requests. Is that Robert Ovadia that's carrying that, or is that George?
Ally?
No, I'm here. This is Robert.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, Knox Play Schools has been leasing the portables at Holbrook Palmer Park under their current lease, which was executed back in two thousand and one. Knox Play Schools, as you know, have been, has been closed since, since the initiation of the shelter in place orders and the directives by the county health officer dating back to March thirteenth. The, they have come to us, to the council before with request to waiving of rent. We're pleased to say that Knox Play Schools was able to open partially for summer camps, and that started this week. They have thirty-six children enrolled currently in three separate cohort groups, keeping them separate from each other, dedicating staff to, to care for and manage each of the individual cohorts without commingling. At the council meeting back in, at the end of May, the play school was encouraged to apply for funding through San Mateo Strong. They were able to receive a, a grant, I believe in the amount of ten thousand dollars. There was a request, however, at that point in time, that should the play school be successful in getting the grant, that they would be able to pay a portion of the rent for the month of May. But as the school hadn't been able to reopen to having any students through the month of June, the play school has not at this point paid for the months of May and June or July. Knox Play Schools has requested a waiver of rent for the months of May and June and prorating of rent for the months of July and August, as they are just partially open with limited students. The lease that we have with Knox Play Schools is up at the end of August. There is an option for a, a couple of one-year extensions that Knox Play Schools can execute due, due to the current status with COVID and the concern of the ability to have the play school open to its fullest capacity. There is a request to have a reduction in the rent moving forward. And so I do want to note that Susan Knox is currently on the line and able to answer any specific questions that you may have with regards to revenues that they have, the types of attendance, the status of their summer camp, what they anticipate for fall operations, as well as the kind of funds that they anticipate in terms of revenue. So if there's any questions for me or for Susan Knox, we are available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of clarification?
Yes, to the mayor.
Yes, please, Karen.
I, you know, obviously, I, this can, I, I guess staff has the ability, but I'm actually using her information. I just have a few questions. Susan, I noticed in your response and attachment A that one of your comments was is that you have twelve or fewer children. Where are you getting that as a require, is it a requirement or a choice?
Oh, on the, hi, hello, everyone. And on the, you're talking about the third page of my proposal that says most recent San Mateo County requirements found under FAQs for childcare.
Yes.
That's from the San Mateo Department of Health.
Okay, I apologize because I, I, I looked at the same, I'm, the shelter in place order that's current, and it, my, and it's my interpretation, and if I can have some help. I got that smaller stable groups are daycare with fifteen to twenty students, so I just didn't know why they didn't correlate together.
Lots of different regulatory agencies, and I actually was just on a call with my licensing rep, which is the Department of Social Services Community Care Licensing that regulates child cares in the, in the different counties. And it's very confusing because they are getting mandates from different organizations, Department of Health and the state and the county, and but we're, we're currently told that twelve is our limit in a group.
Okay, if, if, if it, if it came out different, that it was fifteen to twenty, you could actually increase your number of students.
I could.
Okay. And in your, in your comments, you make a comment related to, in case two of my four classrooms close, with, because I'm not familiar with your layout, if two classrooms close, would you not shut down the entire facility, or is there, where's the trigger point?
Unknown. At this, there's so much unknown at this point. I, one of the reasons that I believe that they had us put children in cohorts was so that they didn't intermingle with other, other groups. So I have, if you've not been to the facility, there's four distinct classrooms. And I, and I also took the yard, we're only using three right now, because I only had three teachers that were, felt it was safe to teach of my, of my nine. I have, I have six that are, or I mean, sorry, six that are teaching. Two teachers per classroom. I also divided the yard into three distinct sections. So one group of twelve with two teachers never interacts with another group of twelve. So if one child in a group of twelve gets sick, gets a confirmed case of COVID or one of the teachers, then my belief was that only that classroom had to close for two weeks. So any confirmed case of COVID, we need to report to the Department of Health, and we also need to report to our, our licensing. And then we need to close for two weeks, disinfect, you know, put everybody on quarantine, that kind of thing. But I was told today by my licensing rep that we would probably need to close the whole school. But she was a little bit unclear on, on what the procedures are, and I would need to talk to the Department of Health if that should happen.
I just have two more questions if I could.
Sure.
What are you doing related to full distance learning versus on and off daily schedules?
We're not doing any distance learning. No, it's really, really difficult with the little ones. And we did do some in April and May, for sure. We just didn't know how long it was going to go on, but you know, a lot of the parents are using the, using the screens. It's hard to get the kids to be on the screen for the circle times, and so right now, we're not doing anything.
And I guess my final question would be, apologize taking some time here. During this time, are you, because of the increased ratios, have you had to, and increased expenses, have you increased your cost for care?
Yes, I did charge more for the, so we're doing a four-week summer camp right now because we were told we had to do it in a, when I set it up, it was a minimum of four weeks because they don't want children going from camp to camp to camp, spreading germs. So I made it for four weeks. Traditionally, we've run it week by week, and I am charging a bit more. I'm charging sixteen hundred dollars for the four-week session, which is a little more than, you know, the week by week rate. Yeah, it's a twelve to two ratio. It's a lot lower ratio than we're normally doing.
Would that same thing apply during the school year?
Yeah, that's, we'll have to do something similar. We'll have to raise our rates a lot.
Susan, I have a question. How, how many kids do you have enrolled for the school year?
So I had a hundred and ten.
Right.
Because some kids come, you know, Tuesday, Thursday, some kids come Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We had also an afternoon group. And we're not allowed to do that because the teachers cross over, basically cross-contaminate groups. But I've since, since I sent that, I, I've put out a survey to see, you know, how many people want to send their children five days a week from eight-thirty to two, instead of, you know, maybe what they originally signed up for. How many are able to pay the increased tuition, and how many feel safe anyway, sending their children? And, and I'm getting back, you know, little by little, I'm getting back the responses. you know, little by little, I'm getting back the responses. So I had a, you know, probably fifty responses so back, back so far, and probably about thirty, twenty-five to thirty saying, yes, please, we want to send them, and some saying, no, we're not comfortable sending them to school, either we can't pay that much, or, you know, we only wanted them to come part-time, or we're fearful of the, of getting the virus, are the basic reasons.
So right now, you don't know what the?
I don't know.
Enrollment will be?
Right, yeah, but my, I, right now, with this group size of twelve, I'm, I'm capped at forty-eight.
Okay. Great.
Rick, if I could?
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
So, Susan, I really have two questions, and I'll ask them both at the same time. My, my first question is, I'd, I'd like to hear from you exactly what you'd like us to do, like what, specifically, what's your request for us tonight?
Yeah.
And, and then sort of following that, is if we were to do that, what impact would that have on you, like how would that, how would you expect that to help you, with as much specificity as you could?
It's so hard, council member, it's just, it's just been such a difficult time, I'm sure you can understand, I know your daughter went there a long time ago, and I realize, to everyone, I realize I'm asking for a lot, I realize this is an extraordinary, uncertain sort of request, but it's really been an extraordinary time to try to run a small business, and also a small business where your customers cannot social distance. I mean, we can, we're social distancing from all the adults, all the parents are wearing masks, all the teachers are wearing masks, the children are not wearing masks, they are, within their group of twelve, they are not social distancing. So it's been, you know, it's been extraordinary. What am I asking for? I, I'm worried going into another year where I am bearing the brunt of the financial responsibility, where I may have to shut down and not have any revenue. That's a, that's a huge burden for, you know, my business, I can't bear that, that sort of burden. You know, and, and just like you guys, as everyone has seen this week, with, with Santa Clara County rolling back their reopening, it could happen based on things out of my control, whether one of my children or one of my teachers gets the virus and we have to close, or whether, you know, the county shuts us down for spike in cases, I can't control that. So what I basically want, or would make it more viable for me to exercise this option, is some confidence that I don't have to come back and say, hey, we're closed, can I have rent relief again? You know, say if we, if we had to close for the month of October, that I wouldn't have to pay rent for October, you know, it's, it's completely fair for me to have to pay rent when I'm in operation, I get that. So that, that's, I guess, some sort of staggered rent schedule in that way. What was the second part of the question?
What would that do for you, like how would that, what would you expect if that happened, as far as your, your future?
I would, I would be able to not, you know, be on the hook for $85,000 for the school year if I can't be, you know, if I can't be earning tuition.
Right. But, but you would expect, like, is it your goal to come back next year, and you can just act as though COVID never happened, and, and go back to normal next year and the following years?
You mean, next year in 2021?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, I'm 2021, exactly.
Yes, I would like to, actually, part of the questionnaire that I sent out to the families was, if things improve and guidelines slash restrictions are improved, I would like to go back to normal programming during the school year, if possible. You know, and I kind of said, hey, we may go back to a part-time schedule partway through the year if things change, I don't know how likely that is, but yeah, my goal is to go back to running a part-time program that we've run in the past.
Thank you.
Susan, I have a quick question, then Bill Widmer has a question.
Sure.
We had, I thought we had an arrangement where you, we, we waived the April rent, and we would have wa, and we waived the May rent unless you were to get the grant, and if you got the grant, you were going to pay the May rent.
Yep, I will pay it.
Okay, I, I, the question was why you hadn't?
I had meant to come back to talk to council about it, and just didn't get on, didn't, I said to, to the town manager, I just wasn't able to really wrap my head around what my goal was for the, the program, and, you know, just, it's just been so many changes, it's been hard. So I can pay that, yes, I did receive the grant.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, um, of course, you know, I'm on these calls, Susan, with, with the county, and also Nancy McGee, and, and so, you know, we're hearing mixed messages, obviously, you know, the school superintendent for the county has indicated that they want kids in school, but the, the schools, school day may be broken up in two, half-day is going to be virtual, the other half-day is going to be in classroom with social distancing, and then they would swap over, the virtual guys would then come in, and you know, and, and that they still intend to move forward, as well as have classes outside, which, you know, they, they feel is okay, I don't know if you might consider doing that, at least while the weather's well. But to me, it would seem like perhaps a solution to you, and maybe you could think about it, and then maybe come back to us and tell us, but you know, your, your business is based on a per pupil basis, and so, and because of the fact that the, you know, the, the number of cases that we've had recently are on the rise, I, we're, we're a step away from getting on the governor's watch list, which would put additional restrictions on us, and we don't know really where everything's going to go. So perhaps, you know, a, a, a fair way is to understand how many you normally have, and then come up with a per pupil basis. I realize you're not going to run a class with just one, but, but what do you think about that, do you think that that might be a fair solution to, to this, then if your pupils went down to zero, then obviously, the, the rent would be, would be nothing, or something maybe a base amount, what do you think?
You mean a per pup, a rent based on per, per student? That I, oh, I see what you're saying, okay, so that would potentially work with my model that I'm trying to go into in September, where everyone's coming the same amount, right, everybody would be coming Monday through Friday from eight-thirty to two, but it probably wouldn't work as much when I, hopefully, when I get back to, some kids are coming two days a week, some kids are coming five days a week, some kids are staying, you know, different.
Well, you'd have, you'd have to do a weighted average on that, then.
Yeah.
Bill, could I, I'm sorry, I like where you're going, but can I just ask, would it work if, if we used a percentage of revenue kind of a model? Would that be a cleaner, easier way to do it, and Bill, would that meet your goal?
Yeah, revenue share is a good idea.
We're kind of getting into the discussion phase, I want to see if there's any public comment on this. Anthony, do you have any indication of public comment?
I have none.
If anybody on the phone wishes to make public comment, you need to let us know now.
I just noted that we've had no new people join the call.
No problem, we can continue with the discussion.
So Susan? About a revenue share, you know, per, per pupil or revenue, or total revenue share, which is what the council member Lempers has brought up, which is, you know, along the same lines, would that be something that might meet your needs, but, you know, might keep everything going?
I mean, it sounds like the same idea, it just would, of course, matter how much that revenue share was, right?
Well, we would have to look at what your normal, you know, what you were planning on, and if you, if you met what you were planning on, then you'd be paying the full rent, so just divide that out.
I hear you.
And the number of pupils, students. Or, or do that weighted average, and find out how much revenue you make in a week, and then this, whatever that ratio was, that the town would have normally gotten if everything was going along, without any perturbations up or down, then that's what we would get.
Okay. Okay.
So.
Well, yeah. Just to comment on, on that, in the last year, pre-COVID, you had a fixed rent that you were paying, and I'm sure your revenue changed, right, month to month, because there's kids that came for longer and shorter periods of time, and probably some months, I'm not sure which months, but you, you, it wasn't constant twelve months of the year.
Correct, it's fairly constant, September through May, fairly constant, and then different June, July, and August.
Right.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment. So Susan, I can appreciate your dilemma and your struggles, and I know it's very, very hard to try to figure out what to do and how to do it. I, I'm on the phone three or four times a week with tenants, we're in commercial real estate, I have retail properties that I own, and I've got restaurants that are suffering, and I've talked with a lot of other retail brokers and property managers throughout the Bay Area, and I think what you're proposing is really kind of right in line with what a lot of owners and retailers are requesting, and owners are considering giving to their tenants, which is a reduction of about fifty percent in rent, that's overhead. I think the revenue sharing based on your revenue in the ratio to rent, that would be very hard to calculate and manage, and it would always be a moving target, and that's really a little different, I think, not to discount what council member Widmer is proposing, or council member Lempers, but I think it would take, I just think, the half rent for, you know, the portion of the year, and, and then, and then with a vehicle to repay that when things are up and running again, you know, kind of on an amortized basis, so that we're just not gifting it away, and then you're free to manage your business however you see fit. But that's, I, I think that your proposal is, is reasonable, and I would support that.
Mr. Mayor? Following up on Councilmember Widmer's comment about a ratio, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong on these numbers, but your summer camp maximum typical enrollment is about fifty-five children?
Fifty-five each week, but we were going to run it for eight weeks.
But, but on average, your weekly capacity is fifty-five?
About, yeah.
And then your normal enrollment capacity during the normal school year is about a hundred and ten children?
Yeah, about.
So at your, at the current ratio for what the county's prescribing, you're capped at forty-eight during the school year and thirty-six in the summer?
No, we could have forty-eight in the summer if I had enough teachers to teach.
Forty-eight in the summer, so, I mean, those, those straight ratios, forty-eight out of a hundred and ten is forty-three percent of rent, and, you know, forty-eight out of fifty-five is a much higher percentage, but you could apply those ratios strictly to the rent, and then if it has to close, set a minimum rent amount to identify for that.
And that's almost a fifty percent reduction.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could do it that, we, we could do it that way, or we could just waive the June rent, and Susan's going to pay the May rent, waive the June rent, and then go to fifty percent going forward, and if there's a shutdown, we'll readdress it.
That would be my.
Frankly, I think it's simpler to do the fifty percent arrangement rather than trying to do a calculation, but I think you're going to come out at about the same thing, and if one is more meaningful, then I'm, I'm okay to do it, but I'd rather be simpler than more complicated.
And then you don't have to worry about it, and you can look at it, and then figure out some kind of a repayment amount, structure.
Well, why don't we have the city manager and Susan get together and come up with a form?
And I would like to, I, through the mayor, I would like to feel more comfortable, I apologize, on the allotable number of students, you know, I would, you know, I, I, I just, just because I'm a little bit familiar with summer programs, and just reading the intake here, is there, you know, there could have been two, three-week programs, which would maximize six weeks of care, and then I don't have this, and I apologize, Susan, but I, you know, my interpretation of the order, and I, I know that you're the expert, and I know that staff really isn't chiming in on the expert side of this, but the present order of fifteen to twenty suits students, I would just want to say, we've got to make sure to maximize the potential capacity in a safe manner, and if the county order is X, because if you have a higher density, you have to have recoverable cost, if you're having one stu, I mean, two teachers per twelve children, but if you can expand that out, then it helps the cost of the actual care as well, so as this process moves forward.
Carrie, this is Robert, just to, to chime in on a couple of things, as having school-aged children and seeing the different offerings that came through, you know, to help us with our childcare. The, in the beginning of the summer, the order was a four-week minimum, as Susan indicated, with maximum of twelve kids. Later on, I think it was just even a, a couple of weeks ago, it dropped to about three weeks with the same twelve kids for the summer, for the summer sessions and summer camps, and so I don't know if anything recently changed up at to fifteen, but what the camps were asking for, as Susan indicated, was a commitment for, you know, four weeks initially, and then moving down to three weeks, so that they can plan and have the cohort set up, and it was a commitment, whereas before, the commitment was a week-by-week commitment.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the school year, school year component, and just, you know, in an interest of maximizing potential, the current order being the most recent one we're speaking about, which I don't know if this is, so if there is a higher, you know, ratio issue, which would help margins to help everybody involved here, it's about the recoverable cost as well.
So if, if I could, I, just in terms of comments, I, I liked the idea of, of deferring, not deferring, of delegating a negotiation on this point to someone, George, I guess, is who Bill had recommended. I, I think there's a lot of issues that would be hard to work through all the details here at the council meeting.
Right.
And just philosophically, if George is going off to, to do that, from my position at least, I'd, I'd like to see us make sure that, it can be a, a real negative, if, if the Knox Play School was, was shut down or unable to operate, and if we played a role in causing that, that would be a real negative, and I think we should deal with it as a relatively short-term issue, meaning let's get through this, this academic year, and, and, you know, reconsider all, all the issues in front of us, but that, that'd be my sense, I, I'd like to see what we can do to, to help out reasonably, and would delegate it to staff to work through the details.
So Mike, let, let me suggest a slight adjustment to that, because I, I think that's right, I agree with that. We, we know that we're not going to come back together until September, so, and the lease ends at the end of August, so we'd be on an extension for the next year. So maybe what we could do is waive the June rent, have half rent paid for each of July and August, and have George and Susan get together and work out an arrangement that will then take us into that one-year extension, and go through that entire year, and they, they can work that out, and we can consider that in September.
Mr. Mayor, we are having a meeting on the twenty-seventh, if I remember right, or something like that, to discuss the green waste contract, so perhaps the Susan and the city manager could spend some time in the next week, and then come up with a proposal, and we could look at that at the same time, and that way, it's not just half, we're just agreeing to half rent, I'd, I'd like actually somebody to really look at it. I'd like actually somebody to really look at it.
Can the two of you meet between now and then in time to put that into a staff report?
Yeah, I've got nowhere to go on vacation.
I gotta go to the park every day, so yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Let's bring it back at the meeting at the end of July.
Got it, July 27th.
Great.
George, you're not going on vacation now, are you? It's in August.
That's correct.
Okay.
Every day is a vacation.
You said you'd be here.
Good.
Okay, I think we're moving on to the next item, which is the town center report, I believe.
And the fountains.
Yes.
The fountains.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hi, Marty. Yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So yeah, this is your monthly town center report, project update. And as you know, as you see, and as the mayor came out last week, there's a lot of activity going on at both the library and the city hall building and ancillary. So it's very, very exciting. And I encourage you to hopefully come out there when you can, when you have time, and show you around, see all the new progress. The library building regarding the rambed earth walls, which, as we all know, has been pretty challenging. There's actually six distinct walls for the rambed earth, and one wall is completely done now. And within the next two weeks, they'll have probably all six walls done with the rambed earth. And in my report, there's some pictures of the rambed earth. And the mayor, you know, you saw that too when you were on your tour on Monday. And so things are moving very quickly. Last week, the contractors started putting in the walls, the interior walls, the exterior walls, the steel studs. And they're actually putting up the seat lock already too. So offices are being formed and coming together. So in about a week or so, you'll start seeing offices all over the place. So just lots and lots of very good activity happening and very exciting. So, but the one thing that we would like to get direction on from council today is that, as you know, when there was a discussion earlier item regarding the naming rights for some of the items, the council on the May 20th council meeting accepted two donations for proposed water features, one off Fair Oaks and one near the library. And in my staff report, I have some early concepts, schematics that were provided by WNS to, I believe, council and the CCAC early on, and then also the attachments. And so the question that we have is, based on the donations that we accepted, is there anything at this time that you want to do with these proposed water fountain features? And in my staff report, there's a number of different options that we've laid out. And certainly council can decide either take one of those or none of them, or give us all the direction. But if the direction is to do something as far as getting the plumbing and that going, now's the time to do that, because you're going to be the most least expensive cost to do that if you're going to put a fountain in later on, or if you're going to do it part of this project. So with that, I'd like to, you know, open it up for the mayor and the council to, you know, ask me questions or have the discussion and then provide direction on this.
Any questions?
I do, Rick, if I could.
Go ahead, Mike.
Sure. Marty, actually, it'd be very helpful to me every time you give a report, if you could start out by, but just very bluntly telling us where we are with regard to time and budget. So, you know, just very quickly, with short answers there, how do we look in time and how we look in budget?
Well, right now, the schedule technically has not changed since you awarded the contract. However, the contractor is saying that by July of next year, we're going to have that substantial completion, meaning that the city hall building, we're going to be moving people in a phased way with administration, public works, planning and so on, and some of the police. So within 12 months from now, people are going to be moving into the building with final completion earmarked around end of October. And tomorrow, I should be getting the next update on the schedule for the overall project. So due to COVID and a few other things, certainly we've lost some time. And the contractor is going to want to be compensated for that. We haven't gotten a request yet from them, but I'm sure that's going to be coming pretty soon. From the funding standpoint, I defer that to either Robert Brown or George to talk about where we're at on the funding perspective, but I believe we're right in line with everything.
That's correct. There have been, there have been change orders for the project, as you can see on attachment two. But, and so the percentage of change orders for the town portion of the project is 0.1%. And the percentage of change orders on the library is 0.42%, which is quite, quite good for being 52% of the project or 42% of the project complete.
Right. So does that answer your question, Councilmember Lumper?
Yeah, it does. It's just very helpful to me whenever you report, just to let us know if we slipped from that substantial completion in July and final completion in October, or if we.
I can add that in our reports moving forward. I think that's a good point.
Yeah, that's great. And then also on the budget, and it sounds like things are tracking great, so.
Right.
Marty, I have a question. Just to be clear, it sounds like what is, what is recommended by staff and what is needed now is some direction for these two water features that would enable Amaroso to do the MPE? That's kind of the minimum desired immediate need. Is that correct?
Yes, that's a correct mayor, because if you do it now, it's going to be the least cost possible. If you even defer that, you know, six months or a year or whatever, it's going to cost a lot more to do it then. You're going to have to probably tear up some landscaping areas or whatever. And now, since there's nothing out there, just the dirt and stuff and gravel, now's the time to do that and be the least expensive way to do it.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a quick question, Rick.
Go ahead, Bill.
So Marty, the staff report says it, and I can understand that you would need to run an electrical line out there, but you said also a sewer line, and I didn't understand why you made the sewer line. I can understand that we don't want to have anything impact the sewer line that we have out there. And maybe that's what the staff report was saying, but I didn't understand that. Alls you need is an electrical line for this.
No, actually, a public fountain has a lot of code requirements, county health requirements. And that's one of the reasons that back in the design and development phase, the costs for the fountain at that time were one of the VE items that the CCAC recommended council and was approved. You actually need electrical, you need a water line, you need sanitary sewer line. So you need to have all those connections. And there's so many different things, because if kids or dogs or whatever drink, you can't get, can't get sick. So there's a lot of requirements for a public fountain. It's much different than if you have one at your house.
So if I could ask a follow-on question, which you touched on. I don't have my hands right now on the original MAC5 analysis, but how much was the fountains? How much was each of the fountains in the estimates?
I don't remember that. I don't remember that offhand, Councilmember.
Well, it sounds like it'd be a lot with regards to, you know, having to have all these different types of connections. And then there's the cost of having a large fountain.
I mean, there's so many, there's so many variables about what size fountain, you know, and design and all that kind of stuff. I mean, it goes the gamut on that.
Well, Marty, isn't it, isn't it true that we do have electrical, water, and drainage in these areas generally? I mean, right now, it's easy to put it in, but these lines are running right past where these water features are proposed.
They're in the vicinity. And so if the council wants to say, give us some kind of placeholder where a future fountain like in front of the library might go, then we'll look at exactly where all the utilities are now and see if we need to bring anything closer or stubble them out and put them in boxes and that. So later on, it'd be much easier to then connect.
So just to follow on then on Rick's question. So the minimum we need to do, if we're going to do fountains, the smart, the smart minimum thing would be ask Amaroso to set a place and ask Amaroso to make sure that things are stuffed out there and the connections are there. And when we put a fountain, when we have whatever fountain we want to put in those locations, we place it in and hook it up. Is that, is that correct?
Right, that's, that's correct, Councilmember. It's just, we want to make sure, because you accepted the donations, assuming you're going to be moving forward with these water features. So to get the plumbing and everything ready now, well, it's going to be the least cost to do it versus then later on. And so I'll work with Amaroso, because nothing's in their plans right now. So this would be some kind of change order. How much that is, I have no idea. But it should be not that much, because again, as the mayor said, the utilities are in the vicinity. But we might need to branch off those laterals or just put some boxes in, junction boxes that connecting later. Those are all things we'll need to work out with the contract.
Yeah. And through the mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Elizabeth.
So if I could just add on to this, because what we're about to go into is a little bit of an unknown amount, cost of installing these fountains. And so I want to make sure that every step along the way that we stay within the budget of the donation that has been given for each of the fountains when we get to the design phase and the installation phase. And that will limit the size and scope and material and everything else. But I think it is very wise for Marty to have brought this up when he has right now, because just finding the appropriate location, especially in front of the library, where it's not going to cost a whole lot to run these underground utilities, but in a spot where we think that the fountain would go. So that, that would, we'd need to kind of figure that out. I think the front of the building is a little bit more straightforward, because, you know, it's kind of on that front side. But in the landscape area by the library, I think, Marty, you could guide us a little bit about, you know, where an appropriate spot might be cost-wise and, you know, design-wise. But I know we need to do a design, figure out who's going to design it. I don't want WNS.
We're really into the comments now. Let's see if there's public comment. Is there any public comment?
I don't have anything to.
Okay, and if anybody on the call wishes to make a public comment, they need to let us know now. Okay, George, did you have something?
Yes, just to note, there is no budget for these fountains. Donation amounts were, was from existing after to now donors to the overall project. But those numbers don't represent the budget for the fountains. So the council can actually set what you want to pay for these fountains themselves. The change order to Amaroso, as Marty indicated, is probably not going to be excessive at all. That's something we can do easily. It's the design of the fountains that we really need to know. Where are you going to place them and who you want to assist in the design process?
Well, I, so just a. Yeah, I apologize through the mayor. I was just wanting a little bit of a clarification on that. We can, George, are you asking for a two-tier approval? Because rough-in is different than design aspect of the fountain location. Rough-in, we could make relatively easy the cost, and Marty can work out it at the most economical and right location. But the foundation component's a second tier to that.
You mean the design?
Design, yes, ma'am.
The rough-in I can approve is a simple change order to Amaroso. Once the, once we determine where we're going to place them, and sooner we determine that, the better. But what, what staff really needs is how you want to design them, who you want to design them, and who you want to have input into that process.
Well, let me suggest that we separate those two. The first item that I think needs to be determined now is where each of these water features would go. And probably some suggestion, very rough suggestion on what they look like, whether they're a fountain or a pool or whatever it might be. And I think that could be done by the project management committee. We had an ad hoc committee that worked with the product, project management committee. Rose Howe's the only member of that committee left in town. But I think that Steve Doetstar would be available and very helpful. So I would recommend that we meet with them as the project management committee, as we did in the past, and bring back a proposal to the council. And that that proposal, I think the first stage of that is just where and roughly what it is. Not anything about design, but there's going to be a water item here. It's either on a wall or it's a pool or whatever it might be. That can come back with a recommendation to the council. And I think the second level is who would do the design. We don't need to decide that now. Am I right about that, George? Yeah, so I think we can hold off on, on the actual design. The cost will be very minimal here. But we need Amaroso to do it, because if we don't do it now, the costs are not going to be minimal.
Right.
So to the mayor, I'm not sure that, we keep talking about designing a fountain, and I would, I would hope that we're looking at designing the infrastructure for it and the placement of it as opposed to designing a fountain. I would hope that.
Nobody's talking about designing a fountain. Talking about roughing out what there would be, just not, not designing anything.
Yeah, because we should go with an off-the-shelf design.
And we'll bring it back to the council.
Excellent. They want this fountain. That's a whole different conversation. But under our constraints, you know, that's a whole different story.
I didn't hear what Councilmember Lee said.
I was muffled. I was just saying that, yeah, I'm sorry.
You're mumbling.
I know. It's, it's this great speaker setup I have. Yes, I would agree that we're doing the design component. And, you know, as long as we're plumbed in and in that, you know, that vein, the consideration of the revenue source, if we're paying for it or a donor's generosity pays for it, could change what the fountain area can look like. But right now, like Councilmember Widmer mentioned, it may be an off-the-shelf item. And there's some beautiful off-the-shelf items, but that's TBD.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So mayor?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
So then the rough idea then is the subcommittee of the mayor and the vice mayor, which is the current CCAC subcommittee on the council, along with former project management committee member Steve Doetstar and then Rose Howe, get together with staff, talk about the potential of where the fountain would go on site, where the two fountains would go, and a rough idea of what they would potentially look like, whether they're bowls or wall-mounted or that sort of thing. And then bring that back to the council for approval. And then Marty would then have the idea of where we could do the rough-ins for SJA to go do that. But then we would also then talk about whether they're off the shelf or whether they're going to be designed by somebody or how that next step's going to be.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be decided now. But I think it would be great if we could come back to the council in September so that, you know, Amaroso can start including this, because they're, they're in the process of doing all the utility stuff now. They haven't begun the irrigation, and this kind of relates to that. But they will be. So I think that this is very good.
Yeah, the latest would be September. That area is what I think would be good. So I think that'll work timing-wise, so that'd be good.
Is, is that the consistent direction with the whole council?
Fine with me.
You're muted, Bill.
I said, I'd heard Mike trying to say something earlier. I said, I'd heard Mike trying to say something earlier. I didn't hear what he had to say. I'd like to hear it, if he actually.
Wow. No, I actually didn't, I was trying to say something, but, but I'm fine with this.
That's great. Well, then, then be quiet.
I shall. I'll return to my, something, my muted status.
I think it was Reese that was mumbling, that, you know, we got confused.
I always get accused of mumbling.
With that, I've got, we've got direction, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, and council.
Thank you, Marty, for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you, Marty.
Come, come get a site visit. You're going to be excited.
Will do.
Hey, I went last week, it's really changing. Everybody should go. It's absolutely worth doing.
Yeah.
And, and the rammed earth walls, you should see them. They're, I think they're a challenge, but they'll be very interesting, but they're a challenge.
Okay.
I think we can have a motion to adjourn.
Move. Public comment period, I don't know if Greg's on the phone or not.
Ah, yes, we have the final public comment period.
I thought, I thought we were going to have council comments first.
That's right.
Do you want to make another statement, Bill?
Yeah, I do. I do.
Go for it.
I just want to make everybody aware, Rick, I'm, I'm sure, I don't know if you were on the call today, but, you know, our testing has, has proven that it's going up, our infection rate is going up. We're now at everyone gets tested at five percent. And the, you know, of course, if you go above the five percent, or if you have an excess in your hospital ICU beds, what we have is, you know, you get on the watch list, and then there's further restrictions that the governor puts on top of you. The state is changing the way that the testing is going to be allocated, and it's only going to be going to, actually, people who are exhibiting symptoms and first responders only. So, we're not going to get the influx of people going to the very least sites that will actually keep that level down. And, and as, and as you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, there's a lot of concern from a lot of parents and school boards with regards to, should we have our kids go to school or not. So, I just, just think it's important that, that, you know, everybody that we talk to following, you know, wearing mask and things like that, that's, that's very important. Mike Callagie has asked us that we, we try and reinforce that, so that we stay on the good side. All of our neighbors are now on the, on the governor's watch list, so they're, they've got a lot of further restrictions on their communities. We want to stay in the area where we're at. So, you know, Mike asked us to make those comments today, and so, it was just appropriate. I thought I could save them here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council member Whitmer. We do get the report from the calls, from Connie.
But just to add to that, to what Bill said, that there's also a very interesting fact, which is, you know, our PPE, the, the, both the ICU beds and the ventilators are way down at the county level, but they're being taken up by people coming in from outside of the county. And we're, I mean, that, that's, you know, with our consent, because, but, and it's happening because they're available. So, Sammentail County has an interesting situation where the cases are going up, but, but the critically ill people seem to be going down.
In the county, yes, in the county.
In the county.
We're getting people from San Quentin. Forty percent of our ICU beds are allocated to people outside our county.
Right.
That's significant. Does anyone else have a report? No? Okay.
No, my motion's still.
Is Greg Conlon on the line?
He is not.
He's been, he's been busy guy, I think. You wait, he'll give you a report.
He's trying to solve California's problems.
Of course.
He's probably running for office.
Not that I know of.
Ouch.
Okay.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff, Robert, Robert Baron.